Welcome to the Monday, February 3rd, 2014 Board of Selectmen meeting. First item on the agenda is the signing of the warrant.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next is the approval of the January 27th meeting minutes.
Motion, Bill.
Seconded.
I'll vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is citizen participation. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board who isn't here for the school building issue, or is here but is not on the agenda? All right, not seeing anyone, we'll go right into the agenda. There are no other scheduled public hearings or appointments. Is there a town administrator to report?
No, not tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rick. The old business that we have in front of us is the Woodland School Building Project Analysis of Affordability. Before we get into affordability, what I'd like to do is just make sure we have a good handle on cost and where we are on those costs. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman of the Building Committee.
Mr. Chairman, what we have is a project that is going to come in at $60,900,000. What we're going to ask that you appropriate is $59,900,000. As you recall, the town meeting in 2012 organized a building committee and they funded a feasibility study at the cost of $1 million. Now, that one, extra $1 million, along with the $59,900 that we're going to be seeking, will be put together and that will be available to the state for reimbursement fund. So, we're not going to ignore the $1 million, but we're not going to reappropriate what you've asked to reappropriate, what you folks have already appropriated. But, we have been involved for about 14 to 15 months with any number of tasks with regards to the feasibility study. We saw the town meeting sending us off with the feasibility study to make a determination as to how we would address the long-range educational plan, which is talking about a 3, 4, 5 grade configuration, a 6, 7, 8 middle school configuration, and the 3, 4, 5 configuration in a single building. And what were put together is a proposal for a three-story building existing on the site. Now, it wasn't just decided to put it there, it was after consideration of at least three other sites that were possible sites, and each of them had major cost implications that the existing site did not have. We evaluated the idea of renovating the existing building, adding to the existing building, renovating it also. We came up with a couple of problems there. The simplest one is what do we do with the youngsters that populate that particular facility now? If you recall, when we rehabbed the then Brookside School, we had the opportunity to house children, there were about 400 and maybe 25 of them, in a newly constructed school setting in the existing high school, which is now the Shining Star. We had just completed construction on Memorial, so there was space below, and the portables across from the Memorial today, which is now a parking lot, were not needed for the regular population at Memorial, so that housed it. So, the children were there, there was no disruption. It may not have been as convenient as they would have liked, but nonetheless, education went on in a positive manner. We don't have that option with the 650 youngsters, unless we went out and tried to rent some facilities, which would cost a good deal of money, and none of that is reimbursable. With the rehab and renovations, there were considerations given, but the act of constructing while alongside an existing building with new parts to the building posed too many, what we felt were safety issues during the phase of construction, because children would be here, construction would be going on there. So, it was decided that, in addition, the cost factor, the cost factor for a new building is, believe it or not, less costly on a square foot basis than it is for that existing building. You're talking possibly 3%, 4%, 5% greater cost in the renovation. Now, if any of you have done renovations, you know full well, you expect something to be here, because the as-built drawing says it's here, suddenly you open the wall, it's not there anymore, or you open the wall over here and there's something there. So, it lent itself to being a difficult situation. So, we've arrived at the plan that's going to go before the town meeting in, oh, next week, how about that one? And we're looking at a new building on the existing site, which is going to be a minimal amount of site's development. And once that is completed, in a safe manner, the old building will be removed from the site.
Okay.
So, we're here because we know what our estimators tell it's going to cost, but you folks, along with the finance committee, need to decide, number one, can we pay for it, and two, if we can, how?
Okay.
That's not a building committee prerogative.
Right, right, it's not part of your charter. That's what the accounting folks and the
Exactly.
...school department and others have worked on, FinCom. Okay, so we have an understanding of that. What's, can you talk about the range that we anticipate? I know we're not there yet in terms of
Reimbursement?
Anticipated reimbursement, but can you talk about?
Yeah, well, my, if I had to tell you what I believe is more than likely going to be what the reimbursement will be, I would tell you it's between 45% and 50%. Our reimbursement rate is 59.2, we're not going to see that, simply because they reimburse you at $275 a square foot. All of our estimates come in at $365 a square foot. Now, those are estimates
Right.
Haven't bid anything. Hopefully, they'll come in at less than what the estimators suggest they will, in which case, the overall cost of the building will decline.
Okay.
And that's really what we're hoping. We wanted to give you a maximum possible share for the town, that's what you have.
Okay.
That $34 million was the maxed-out number.
Okay, 34, and you're anticipating somewhere between 45% and 50% reimbursement?
That's what I'd like to see. I'd love to say 55%, but, you know, that's just, I don't see that as being realistic.
All right. Do you want to introduce George, or?
Oh, George Swaim is a member of the building committee, I apologize.
That's all right.
I thought everyone knows George.
No, I, some of the folks at home might not, and I just wanted to make sure people knew who was sitting in front of the camera and the microphones. Okay, why don't we do this? Why don't we get to the core of, you set the groundwork, and we needed to do that in terms of cost, but the primary reason and what we put on the agenda tonight was going over the affordability. So, why don't we switch seats and get some of the folks who participated in the affordability discussion sitting down here and going over some of the documents that at least we have in front of us? Jerry?
Good to see you.
Okay, I'll start with you, Zach. Why don't you introduce who we have here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board. I think I'd like to start out with saying that the town has been preparing for such a project of this caliber by its strong contributions to the stabilization fund over the past few years and, or past probably 10 years. Current balance is around $12.5 million. Before actual payment starts, I'd expect us to be probably well over $13 million. So, before the final numbers from Aldo, as just presented, was at our exposure, we started with building the framework of our income and our expenses. Starting on the income side, we looked at the tax levy, which makes up at least two-thirds of our revenue stream, and honestly, is one of the easier things to predict through the theory of Proposition 2 and 1/2. So, with the exception of new growth, which we estimated at $400,000 per year. Now, we did an analysis of the past 10 years of actual new growth, which came in at an average of $900,000. So, I feel we're pretty conservative at that level.
I'm sorry, we historically averaged 900 and you're estimating 400?
400, yep.
Okay, all right, well, depending on the economy, it can, that's good.
Exactly, there's no guarantees.
No, no guarantees, but that's good.
Yep, so the next largest component is made up of state aid. So, state aid, we estimated at 2% per year across the board. I also did the same exercise with looking at the past 10 years of state aid, seeing fluctuations as high as 14% increase, with at times also seeing decreases, with again a weighted average of around 5.8%. So, once again, I feel we took a very conservative approach at that level. The final
I'm sorry, what did you estimate?
2% per year.
So, you historically averaged 5.8?
5.8%.
And you've estimated for the benefits of this financial analysis, a 2% state aid number?
Correct.
Okay, that's 11 years, okay.
Yep, so the final component of our revenue stream is made up of what we call local receipts, and we basically flatlined that based on historical trends as well, with the exception of a couple of the major components that make it up, such as motor vehicle excise. We estimated a 1% per year increase, as well as hotel occupancy, we estimated 1%. So, that built basically our income stream. Now, I'll turn the tides over to the expenses. Obviously, we started with the operating expense, operating budget. So, likewise, with building our income, we took certain sections that we knew were just not going to be within 2%, such as health insurance, which we estimated at 6% per year across the board, as well as looking at the pension appropriation, which we also estimate at 4%. Now, I serve on the retirement board, so I know that the figure's going to come in at 4. I also have the amortization of the unfunded liability at my fingertips, so we feel this was a very good estimate. All right? Everything else, we estimated at 2% per year across the board. So, that built really the meat and potatoes of our expense side. So, next, we wanted to take a look at some of the goals and objectives of finance committee, your board, and others, which really make up, setting aside $1 million in additional capital needs outside of the operating budget, while at the same time earmarking $500,000 for stabilization contributions. Likewise, we built right into our model, $1.4 million to be set aside to leave as excess levy capacity. So, now, for the people at home listening to this, what that ultimately means is we do not plan on raising to the levy limit, to the tone of $1.4 million. Now, that also could be translated into a little bit of wiggle room, this is all estimates, projections, forecasting. Of course, there will be some error, but if you further look at our model, you take the total expenses, put up against total revenue, we still have a surplus. Now, that could be translated into cover whatever snow and ice deficits we may or may not have, as well as further wiggle room, or ultimately can, that could be translated to absorb the debt limit. Now, I just want to take a minute to address the fact that the debt limit is a theoretical limit that is simply financial, being financially responsible. There is no mass general law that governs that limit, it's simply a recommendation. So, my point is, at times when the budget can handle exceeding $3 million, as it currently is, it should. It quickly became apparent with using a debt limit of $3 million, that we could not take on a project of this caliber without completely blowing our stabilization fund. So, immediately, we needed to address that issue. For purposes of our analysis, we used a figure of $3.5 million. Again, this is no limit that has to be upheld to, at times when the budget can handle exceeding it, it should, with still meeting our goals and objectives of, again, $500,000 per year to stabilization, $1 million per year in additional capital needs outside of the operating budget, and earmarking $1.4 million as we targeted in excess levy capacity. So, building that income and expense statement really laid the bricks of the foundation of taking it to the next level and seeing if we can fit debt to this caliber into it. So, the next
Now, debt, on the debt side, Zach, you had to estimate what the bond would be.
Correct.
So, and how did you arrive at the, until you float a bond, you really don't know?
Yeah, basically, we looked at past history, market expectations, and really what the rates are today, which Kelly will get into
Okay.
A little bit. So, for purposes of this analysis, we used 3.25%. We view that as a little conservative, but again, what's the rate's going to be tomorrow? What's the rate's going to be a year from now? We thought that was a pretty solid figure. So, as Aldo had indicated, the cost came in at $34.6 million, of which we had already appropriated $1 million. So, just in the spirit of estimating for purposes of forecasting, we had used a figure of $34 million. Basically, over 20 years, 3.25%, that translates to $1.7 million a year in principal and interest at $1 million sliding backwards. So, next step came, all right, how do we, how do we fit this particular debt into the big puzzle here? Simultaneously, just being financially responsible, we took a peek at the capital improvements that might be on the horizon for the future, just to demonstrate that by this particular project coming on, will not hurt our capabilities of borrowing in the event if we need to. So, with the analysis that was distributed, we identified three major projects that would be on the horizon outside of this new school. One being the Milford Youth Center, one being the Parks, and the third being Godfrey Brook. So, we took on the exact same practice by amortizing out what the actual principal interest would be, estimating what our interest rates will be, and we built this all into a model that would demonstrate how we could utilize stabilization, utilize our levy capacity, and still accomplish all of the said goals.
Okay, and, you know, what I didn't see, and maybe it's here, and I'll apologize in advance, we didn't talk about another stabilization, the capital stabilization fund that currently sits at
That was correct.
About 2.5 million, if I'm not mistaken?
Yep, approximately 2.5 million in our capital improvement stabilization fund. We also did not address the fact that the town has $1.5 million in free cash, nor did we address that the probability of free cash year to year into the future is very good. But, again, we can't bank on those funds
Right, you don't bank on.
Being available. So, ultimately, when we went through this exercise, it was truly to present a worst-case scenario. So, I really do not expect ever to draw down on stabilization to that level whatsoever.
Okay.
And again, I brought up the fact that if you look at the income as projected versus expenses as projected, with those three objectives, again, stabilization, $1 million for capital improvements, 1.4 million in excess levy capacity, there is still a surplus.
Now, when you talk about excess levy capacity, we talk about it in a lot of different terms and languages, so I just want to make sure that, this is what, this is a number, I know that you built in 1.4. Historically, we've not gone that high. Typically, we've applied $1 million.
Typically, we do
And that's only in later years, but we've applied $1 million the last four.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, we use 1.4 because that's what it actually came in last year.
Okay.
Now, one of the, when we're doing this forecasting and projecting, a couple estimates that, again, at the time are simply estimates, when they become a reality, it changes the final number. In this particular year, new growth came in way higher than we expected.
Okay.
That's how it translated from $1 million to 1.4 million.
Till we left an additional
So, we left it at 1.4, just to try to stay consistent, and again, that does give us a little flexibility. None of this is written in stone, but I feel, the amount of detail that went into this was at the departmental level. So, every single department's cash receipts, we looked at thoroughly over the next 10 years. Every department's expenditures, we looked at thoroughly independently, each, all adding up to make up these numbers. So, a lot of work and a lot of thought went into this process.
Okay. Next, I want to go to Mark, but I know Paul Abendans also participated in this, and I just want to say our financial analysts participated in this. I'm sorry, you wanted to go to Kelly next?
I just wanted Kelly to mention what the current rates are today, just as a comparison.
Yeah, I contacted McLean at Unibank to get today's current rates, and she gave me a bond rating of 3% for today. I know they used a higher rate to be conservative, and
A higher rate of cost to be conservative, right?
For the interest rate.
We would pay interest of
Right.
3.25 and
Right.
Currently running about 3%.
It's currently running about 3%.
All right.
So, we're comfortable that the 3.25 is
Okay. Do you have anything else?
I think Mark actually wanted to
I'm good.
I was going to go to Mark. Mark, why don't you talk to us about, we've got some
You've got some figures in front of you?
Different sheets, just to give us different scenarios. Why don't you go over what you provided?
I don't know what order you have them in, but there's one sheet in there that talks about the stabilization account. I'm not sure which one you have.
I've got a couple of different scenarios.
All right.
I've got one with a bunch of capital, and then I've got another one with just the school.
Just the school, that's the one I want to talk about first.
Page three?
Yep.
All right, on the four-page sheet we got.
And we'll, we're going to, after we have a meeting on, we have a FinCom meeting on Wednesday night to approve all of this, before we go to town meeting, we're going to put all this up on our website.
Okay.
On the town website and on the finance committee website, so that it's available to the public, and we'll present it again at town meeting.
Okay, but so far, I just want to understand where you are in the process. You presented to the executive committee at this point?
And that was approved.
Okay, all right.
So, the recommendation from the executive committee will be presented on Wednesday night to the FinCom.
Okay.
The executive committee is made up of members that have financial background, and so we use that as the budget subcommittee executive committee.
Okay.
The chart here shows, across the top, it's existing debt, adding the new school, gives us the total debt. The initial debt limit, right now, is $3 million. That's an arbitrary number, as Zach said, that's set by the finance committee or recommended by the finance committee in order to cover the existing debt and not impact stabilization and not impact the operational budget. The number is flexible, and we look at it every year. Up until the time we add the school debt, we've been paying the existing debt out of the $3 million, and whatever went over that, it was negligible, we would pay it out of the operational budget. So, we never impacted the stabilization account. We always put money into the stabilization account, because we were preparing for this school for a long time. As a matter of fact, two years ago, we ran scenarios of, when they first started the building committee, 18 months ago, of $20 million, $25 million, and $30 million. So, we've been working these numbers for a long time. If you follow this across, in 2016 is when we project that the debt for the school will come onboard, which is 2.8 million in payment. Add that to the existing debt, gives us a $5.2 million payment, annual payment. 3.5, we raised the debt limit to 3.5 million, and that comes out of the operational budget. So, the difference is 1.8 million, round numbers, that we have to draw from the stabilization account. Our goal on an annual basis is to put a minimum of $500,000 into the stabilization account, plus 2.5% interest that we draw for that money, gives you $841,000. So, the net number off the stabilization account is $900,000. And if you look at the stabilization account, it drops on an annual basis as we go through this $34 million to a low of 9.7 million, 9.759. And then it starts to go back up as the debt decreases.
So, if we were, just for the sake of discussion, I want to see if I have it right. If we were to just look at the Woodland School burden to the stabilization, if we fund that capital, not touching the 2.5 million that's in a stabilization capital fund?
That's a separate account for separate projects.
We draw it down to the lowest point at 9.7 million on the stabilization. So, it goes from a high of 12 to 13, depending on where we are next year
Right.
Before the debt starts to come on, and we'll draw it down to a low of 9,759 roughly.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And that's based on, again, 3.5 million of a artificial number, yeah, as a debt limit. So, at times with a decent free cash figure, or say, state aid comes in much higher than anticipated, a lot more of that debt can be handled through our operating budget. So, once again, these are meant to serve as a worst-case
And I appreciate that, but I'm also looking at the scenario, should state aid go to 0 to 5?
Correct, yep.
Exactly.
It works vice versa as well.
It says that with that capital load of the school, we'll be at a stabilization fund of
Over $9 million.
Yeah, over $9 million, 9.7.
Right.
And again, not touching the 2.5 million.
No.
Okay.
The 2.5, let me explain what the 2.5 million is. 2.5 million, we started that account two years ago because we have long-range capital plans by every department. And so, we could project out where, what we have to spend, when we have to spend it. For instance, next year, the chief wants a $1 million fire truck. That's already taken care of in the 2.5 million. The youth center, we put money in for the youth center last year, $900,000. So, if and when, when that comes to fruition of $3 million, which was the projection, we will need to come up with $2 million instead of $3 million. So, we're trying to plan ahead to cover all the short-term capital needs as they come onboard.
Yeah, I just
Without impacting any of the other accounts.
The reason why I raise it is it's not here.
Right.
It's not in this analysis.
It's absolutely not there.
So, it's just an additional buffer?
Correct. Zach, if we turn to the second page, go back one. Zach mentioned three prospects of
All right, what exhibit is that?
Exhibit 5, Mark.
Exhibit, I don't know, I think so, yes, exhibit 5. Zach mentioned a number of different projects that could come onboard in the next couple of years. One of them is Godfrey Brook project, and we projected that at $5 million. One is the youth center for $2 million, and one is a million for the Parks Department to build a field. The million, we haven't bonded a million dollars or less in a long, long time, all right? So, that's typically not something we would bond, we typically pay for that if we could out of cash or out of the operating budget. But, if you take that scenario, we put all three of those on, that's $8 million, and two, one of those projects, I believe, Godfrey Brook, is a 10-year
Correct.
Bonding issue, can't bond it for more than 10 years. That front loads a lot of the capital expenditure. So, if you look at that sheet, this is the worst-case sheet, all things being equal, the stabilization account drops down to 1.67 million in 2025. So, that tells me that we have at least $8 to $10 million in debt capacity with the school onboard.
Right.
All right.
And whether the town meeting chooses to do those things that have been discussed or other things
Right.
If there's a catastrophic issue at a school or something else, then
But we've planned for that.
We make choices, yeah.
But we've planned for new roofs and all of that in the other capital project budget, because we add money to that on an annual basis, too.
Right, and I'm sorry, that number that you're planning on adding is $500,000 baked into the scenario?
Typically.
Okay.
So, that's the worst-case scenario. If you now turn to the first page, which is the P and L that the finance committee puts together on an annual basis, to look at
This is exhibit 4?
Exhibit 4.
Okay.
On the left-hand side of the revenue stream, 58 million is the existing levy, 2.5% increase is the law, $400,000 is estimated new growth, is what Zach's saying, and that's what we typically do. It used to be a lot higher, but we, there were a couple of years where it dropped down to $400,000, $500,000, so we left it at $400,000 to be conservative. Anything over that is gravy. The cherry sheet numbers includes chapter 70, and that's an estimate, we typically use level funded going across the board, all right, because we don't know what the state's going to do. And we don't know that till the May town meeting, if we're lucky. Room occupancy tax, again, is an estimate, this was based, this is last year's number, If you recall, a couple of years ago, we increased that tax, that brought in an extra quarter of a million dollars to the revenue side. And school choice numbers, that's choice out, $500,000, that's the number of students that go out to other schools that we have to pay for. Choice in goes to the school side. Those numbers are changing significantly, it's almost equal, equal now. We put the sewer receipts down here, but that's a, their own department, and that's an enterprise fund, so they take care of that. It's not included in the balance, it's included, but not. On the expenditure side, this is based on, again, last year's numbers, with a 2% increase was put in here, average. Some departments will go less Some departments will go less and some departments will go more, based on contractual obligations. And if, if you understand, 85% of this budget is salaries, alright? 15% is expenses. So we're projecting an operating budget of 87 million for fiscal '15. And then down below that are outside budget numbers that you see a million to stabilization, which is a half a million to the big stabilization account and a half a million to the capital stabilization account. The overlay account is typically 700,000. I never know what assessments are, but Paul does. And there's a million in capital projects in addition to the 2.5 million that we have there. So if we have to draw on that 2.5 million, we will. If we don't, we'll add another half a million to it and cover all the capital projects for next fiscal year. And 1.4 million in levy capacity, which gives us a total of 92,556. And if you take the total on the other side, revenue side of 93 million, and you throw in 300,000 for excess snow and ice, we end up with a surplus of 470,000 on average. Again, all things being equal. That includes, as you see the notes down below, a 10% increase in health insurance, 6% increase in retirement fund, and state revenue this year is gonna add about a half a million based on the governor's budget. So that's what we presented to the executive committee. Being conservative as we are, we're going to recommend to the department heads that we do a 0% increase on expenses and contractual obligations on salaries.
To handle the expenses associated with salaries and ask them to hold tight on the budget?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
And we have the sheet going forward for the next 10 years through, or 20 years, using these same numbers going forward. So I think we're in very good shape, actually.
Yeah, I think it speaks to a lot of people working very hard. I'm not gonna go into that except to say that I appreciate the amount of work that's gone into it from the analysis side. This is the type of analysis that was, that I think is necessary, certainly with the project of this, of this magnitude. It's a big project. I think we're probably the envy of a lot of communities out there who, if they could make these statements, they'd be happy. That is, they don't have to go to an override or a debt exclusion. They don't have to impact, they don't have to impact their operating budget. While servicing this debt, we're still gonna, we're still anticipating being able to be off of our maximum levy capacity by a million four. We're still holding in reserve 2.5 million dollars in a capital fund. We still have a stabilization that's drawn down to 9 million if we're doing the school. Yeah, I would say that's, that's pretty solid in terms of what other communities would love to be able to say. Having said that, what I want to do is go to the other board members and see if there's any comments, questions, or thoughts that they'd like to.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, go ahead.
Before you add, say that, I just want to say that this is what the finance committee goes through every year, all year. So none of the numbers are made up. We go through this analysis all of the time. When we present the budget at town meeting, we've gone through all of this.
Yeah.
Just so people understand.
You know, one of the things, I asked everybody at the beginning of the meeting to start from zero so that in the event that somebody's watching at home, or people may have attended fragments of other meetings, to see it all come together here is a good thing. One of the other things that shouldn't be lost in the discussion is some, nearly 10 years ago, the, the long-range plan drove this. Our statements of interest to the SBA over that period, signed by the school committees, reaffirmed by the school committees, and signed by this, this board reaffirmed that long-range plan. The building committee's executing that long-range plan, and you're looking and presented ways in which to, to finance that. I happen to be the co-chair of that long-range plan, and this is exactly what we envisioned. We, we envisioned it happening sooner, but we appreciate the work that's gone on. We didn't know what SBA was gonna do. We didn't know how they were gonna do reimbursement. They've since reconfigured that whole reimbursement process. But here's where we are today, a 10-year-old long-range plan that was made up of school councils, educators, administrators, finance committee members. I'm trying to think who else, well, now our current state rep, who was not a state rep at the time. That's how long we've been doing this, and I wasn't a selectman. Having said that, I'll go to Dean.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. The, I was quite impressed last week at the executive board meeting, myself, Selectman Murray were there, and the presentations that were made. I mean, it just shows that, you know, we've been doing this for a long time and a lot of people working together. And it shows, because I don't think, there are no other communities that could do this as planned by the, by the FinCom. As Bill said, in 2004, we had two articles for Middle School East. We brought it to town meeting, worked a lot of, we worked very, very hard on that. I believe John Seaver was on the committee with me, and it was a very contentious 27-person committee. We thought we had two good articles, but one article, you needed two-thirds, fell short. The other one, it passed the majority, but it, but still no good. So I think a year after that, the planning committee got together and came up with a long-range plan, educational plan. So we've been talking about this for well over 10 years, putting money away. And that was the purpose of the stabilization a long time ago, to put money away, we're self-insured, to have a good bulk of money so that we could do things like this. And throughout all the select, every selectman that I've served with, including this board, there'll never be a debt exclusion in the town of Milford, as far as a debt exclusion or a proposition 2.5 override. Because we feel that we have the, the tenacity, the capacity. I think a lot of people, the town meeting, the FinCom, selectmen, financial department heads, have done a good job as far as the planning. And, you know, everybody says that, you know, Milford is well-run, good shape. Well, here it is right here. The building committee, under the leadership of Aldo Chekey and Jonathan Bruce, outstanding job. And part of the building committee, the questions, the deliberations, the options, throughout the whole process, it was always, you know, we have to follow the educational plan as adopted by the school committee superintendent, but also the affordability. We talk about that all the time, the affordability. Whatever we come up with has to be affordable, has to be vetted by the FinCom and all the other financial departments. I mean, I look at this, I am very, very happy that, you know, we can do, we can do this project. We put money, to me, it's always important to, to watch the tax rate, you know, because we have a lot of people that are paying the bills and senior citizens and whatnot. And we're still able to, to put money aside, excess levy capacity. We have monies for capital projects. We're operating within the proposition 2.5. We put $500,000 a year in stabilization. We have over a million dollars in free cash. And we're also, besides the, the school project, we can also take care of things that we've been talking about for a long time. The armory, led by Selectman Murray. Godfrey Brook, that's been a priority of the board for a long time. And it's, you know, it's property, it's, it's things that, you know, we have to do for those sections. Working with the state representative and the town planner and obtaining monies. And then the fields, I mean, the Parks Department, we all know that we need some fields, all that money's included. And we still, this is very conservative, just looking at the Zach's analysis and summarization of the audit report, it, it's words like this. The auditor's saying we're too conservative. Interest rates a lot higher than expected. No free cash, worst-case scenario. Overly conservative. Room for unforeseen issues. Even though the auditor said, you know, the town could always had a, could always have a debt exclusion down the road if, if it felt that it was needed. But we don't need it. Zach is saying we don't need it. We're saying we don't need it. So even that report, just, I think, stresses the, what Zach has been saying, that everything is done in the worst-case scenario. So I think for myself, I've been doing this for a little while. I feel very, very confident that, one, that, that the building committee's done a superb job. You know, education's important. We've always supported education in Milford and programs for our elderly, no question about it, no matter what it is. And we maintain our buildings, and, you know, this is something that has to be done. And we've been planning for it. We're ready for it. We've had educational forums. I know the superintendent has called town meeting members, given a tour and all that. I don't think he gave them any donuts, so I don't, those people are upset if you didn't get donuts. But most people are, you know, when they see it, saying that everybody's done the right, right thing. And to me, it's affordability, and we can still take care of people like we do as far as the taxes, putting money aside. And, you know, at the end of the day, I think, you know, I don't think there's any other community that can do what we're planning on doing here. And still, as far as the people, the residents, there's a comfort level that if something unforeseen happens, we have the ability to take care of it. And nothing is cast in stone, but I think this is a good plan going forward. You know, we have some great, we have great people in this building who do this every single day. Whether it be the administrator, chairman of FinCom, Paul Ebendanza, the, the executive committee of the finance committee, the finance committee, everyone working together. And, you know, we all want what is good, and I myself, I feel very comfortable with this. I support it 100%. And I think everybody who's worked on this has done a, has done a very commendable job. And I want to thank Mr. Chekey again and John and Bruce, the vice chair and the FinCom, for really vetting it, like I said, it started a long time ago, and now it's coming to fruition. And then hopefully, between now and, you know, next Monday, when the presentations are made at town meeting, they'll also understand that it's something that is affordable. Because if we're not affordable, we wouldn't be advocating for it. And hopefully, they'll pass it, and then we can get going. And we can also take care of those other things in a very planned way. I mean, even when we didn't have 2.5, the town of Milford was very, very conservative, always very conservative. And I think we've continued that, and we're able to take care of the programs, police and fire and everything else. But I feel very confident, and like I said, I've been privy to a lot of discussions, a lot of meetings. And, you know, I'm happy to support this project as presented by the chairman of the building committee and the chairman of the finance committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean. Brian?
Thank you. Let me just thank Mark and the FinCom and Zach, along with the financial team. I, I think both groups really pulled together a lot of information in a short period of time to come up with this pretty cogent analysis in terms of, of how you propose payment. But there's a few things that I'd like to ask Zach, because we've, we've talked about some things over the last week or so, and I'd just like to raise them here, and, and also through Paul as well. First of all, the reimbursements that went to Woodland School in Middle East, you addressed that with the state people?
Yes, we did. And actually, it looks, the number came in around 780,000 that we would have to return to the state. However, that is built right into the 60.9 million dollars. So that is not above and beyond. That is built into the figure.
Now, is that for the renovation money that we received for both schools?
Yes.
Okay, so the Middle East reimbursement money, what was the total on that, do you know?
I didn't actually have the split between the two. I just know it's 780 total. Maybe, maybe someone here.
Is 780 what they're looking for now in terms of holdback?
The process that would happen is, say, we submit our first $1 million for reimbursement, they're gonna take it right off the top.
Take it right off the top, okay. But that's amortized from when we got the money?
Correct. To my understanding, it was amortized over 20 years. So every year that had passed, you, over a straight line, it would reduce. So say we did have it 20 years, we're off the hook, but however, that obviously did not happen, or may not happen.
Because the, the Woodland money, with the, the memo that you and I and Paul went over, that was 1.2, 1.3 million?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And I didn't have the number on the Middle East. Were you able to get that, Paul, what, what the money was to Middle East?
It's on here. What is it? The recovery of the monies is 297 for the Middle East, and the Woodland is 487. And that is what gives you the total of the 780.
Okay, okay. So that's.
It's very small print, though.
It's always in the fine print, yeah. But I mean, so, so, so we factored that in, and.
Absolutely, yep.
I guess for the lack of a better term, it, it goes towards reducing the reimbursement rate to the, to the town?
Basically, yes.
Basically, yes, okay. And the other thing, Zach, I wanted to ask you about, let's see, on exhibit four. So you've tracked the last 10 years on new growth, correct?
Correct.
And you said it comes in about 800, 900,000?
On average, correct.
Okay, so the 400 obviously is a very conservative number, there's no question about that.
Yep, last year alone was over $1 million.
Yeah, but they were extenuating circuit.
They were, but in my analysis, there was also other years where it was above $1 million. But as Mark indicated, at, at times, there was 490. Not once in the past 10 years has it been 400.
But if you go back 10 years, you're, you're gonna go past those blips and come up with an average?
Yeah, that's gonna happen.
The number's worth.
We, we used to put 800,000 in there as a number.
Right.
And then we, we changed that when we got hit a couple of times.
I remember it went to six and, you know, it's in, it's in four, but that's okay. So that's, that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Because you're underestimating the new growth in the community, so that's fine. And, and you did the same thing with the state receipts as well?
Correct, yeah. I, I looked back 10 years. At times, there were times where they did cut us, and the overall increase was negative. But there was also times where we've seen a 16% increase, and last year being one of them was close to 10%, I believe. So the overall weighted average came in at 5.8%, at which we did estimate, too.
Okay, so again, you, you, you know, you've gone back, looked at the 10 years.
Yeah.
Come up with an average, and still underestimated revenue coming into the town.
Correct, yeah. It's kind of the better safe than sorry situation. I mean, you never know, we're still kind of coming out of an economic recession, and you, you never know what the revenue streams they have at the state level. So any given time, they could either level fund, or we could experience a cut again, so.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Now, on expenses, the, the operating budget, you estimated a 2% going forward.
Overall, with specifically targeting certain departments that we know just simply cannot handle a 2% increase, such as health insurance. In this exhibit, you're identifying 2015, we did use 10%. Also, the pension appropriation, we use 6% going forward. We dropped that down to 4%. And that can be taken directly right off of the amortization of the unfunded liability.
Now, did you go back the 10 years on the expenses as well?
In certain situations, yes. To do every single one of them, extensive analysis, where I think a better tool was to look at the overall budget.
Yep.
Which I did go back 10 years.
Okay.
And once again, there was times where we actually had a 0% increase, good job, Mark. And other times where we seen increases up to 8% with a weighted average at 3.2, I believe. And in our projections, I did the same thing, projecting out for the next 10 years, which basically our target came out exactly also 3.2. So overall, it's been consistent, if anything.
Mr. Chairman, Paul runs an analysis by department on an annual basis. He has at least 10 years back, and he projects it out at least 10 years. And he uses an average of 2% going forward, and using existing numbers when he gets them and puts them in. So we're pretty confident, we know where those numbers go.
Yeah.
And, and the departments that can't handle the 2% are the ones that have significant amount, like the school department. They have a lot of employees, and, and the contracts are higher. So that's what, that's how that works out.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, when, when, when we talked, I, I thought that we'd see, you know, a similar analysis on the overall operating budget going back 10 years. Sounds as though you, you analyzed, I guess, certain aspects of the budget in, in that way.
As well as the overall, which, again, came in exactly consistent. So the 10-year weighted average of our operating budget came in at 3.2% increase per year. And that's exactly what our proposal translates into.
Okay. And then for certain things like the, the health insurance, where, you know, it, it looks like we're gonna get hit with a major increase, at least this year, we do have some funds to, to offset that and mitigate it, so that you factor. to offset that and mitigate it, so that you factored in the net, which we think would be about ten percent.
Correct.
Okay, and then you've gone forward from that point, at what percentage?
Going forward, we estimated at six percent.
I did about a five-year, going back, and it's about five percent weighted average, not including this upcoming year, which we're still in negotiations.
I think on the health insurance, you might have to go back further than the five years, because that's when we had the changeover and switched the employee copays. So, you know, I think that we've really dodged a bullet for the last five years or so in health insurance, and I think it's, reality's gonna sink in fast.
And we had, prior to that, we had three different plans that we offered, as opposed to just the one company. So, it was a little more difficult to...
Compare apples to apples.
Yeah, I wasn't comparing apples to apples.
I know, I know, I know. And that's such a volatile expense, not only for our town, but for private businesses, and, of course, nationwide.
Yeah, we're still not done negotiating yet, though.
No, I understand that.
I also think the result of such a high increase in this particular year was, one, the realization of healthcare reform, with a lot of new Fed regulations coming on, that is increasing costs...
Yes.
As well as last year, a hybrid diagram, as Kelly will explain.
Yeah, the utilization was just astronomical. I did bring some information for the board to do.
No, I understand that, but I know when we, you know, switched over a few years back, we really put this day off for another, you know, three to five years, and I think this day is coming.
Yes.
And going forward. You know, the thing, I guess, that sticks to me on this particular project, and, to me, you know, the key words in your letter, you know, of January thirtieth, where you met with Dan Haynes from Scanlon Associates, that we can, you've desired to present the worst-case scenario, which, you know, I think you have, I think you did a nice job with that, in order to display that we can confidently afford the school project and other identified projects, you know? And to me, you know, the key word is identified. So, we have the parks in there at a million dollars, which you know about, Godfrey Brook. And then also, were you able to do a second run at three million dollars for the youth center?
I did, I did.
Okay.
And basically, it would draw down, presented at the worst-case scenario in the same particular year, which I think was two thousand twenty-five, but I was looking at it here, at just under a million dollars. But, again, this is probably not gonna be realized to this level, basically due to us not identifying the usage of free cash that will be available annually, as well as, again, I can't emphasize enough, that the debt limit is an artificial recommendation here, and I'm sure there's gonna be years where we absorb a lot more than that while still meeting our goals and objectives.
No, I, I understand that, but can you give me a run with your, what is it, exhibit five? And then also, I think exhibit two, at the three million dollars for the youth center?
Can you hold for a minute, Steve?
Exhibit three and exhibit five. Because, you know, as we get into this renovation project more and more, we're finding a level of deterioration in that building that I don't think was suspected originally.
Yeah, withdrawing the figures at three million dollars for bonding, again, in two thousand twenty-five, based on this particular simulation, which the only variable we changed was turning two million dollars for the youth center into three million dollars. Basically, in two thousand twenty-five, would the stabilization fund would experience its low at eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
So, probably, you cut that number in half, then?
Yeah, basically, yes.
Yeah, okay. That's okay, I mean, I just want to get that plugged in, because I think that's what, you know, might be anticipated on that. I mean, in terms of other projects that are out there, you know, we know that we're gonna be faced with this federal stormwater regulation mandate, the costs have been projected, they're quite high. You know, we do have some flexibility in this scenario that you're, that you've run, but the flexibility is, is limited. I know there are other projects out there that the town has on the sheets, there's the alternate route, there's repairs that need it, Luisa Lake Dam, I mean, other, you know, smaller capital things. And then, of course, the, the big project that I think is resulting from this particular project is Middle School East. So, what is the extent of the feasibility study that's been done to look at Middle School East?
That's certainly a question for the building committee.
Actually, it isn't, it's...
It's a question for the selectmen.
Yeah.
Well, actually, and I gave you that memo of last May, part of that feasibility study was to address Middle School East.
I know that there's a letter out there that does address it, wasn't from anywhere from my office, that's why I alluded to the fact that the school building committee may want to answer that question.
Yeah, being, I can, let me just give some background, being on the long-range educational plan, and even having talked to a few school committee members, the intent of that building was to go surplus, and then, by statute, have the board of selectmen decide, obviously with a committee pulling together a group of people, what exactly happens with that, whether it goes, goes back on the tax rolls, or it's used in some municipal capacity. But, that, that study and that analysis has not been done, because you don't know whether you're reaping revenue because you, you sell the building, or you decide to use it for municipal use. So, I'm not sure. The building committee, it's certainly outside of their, their purview. And by statute, it's the board of selectmen's responsibility to, to decide, you know, how they want to form a committee, and what they want to do with that building. So, what analysis would you, would you like to see?
Well, that, that was the memo that I presented you and Paul with on Friday.
Yeah, we got a...
Going into the meeting at two o'clock with the folks from the state.
We had a response, sorry, not to interrupt you, but, we had a response that, that the architects and engineers had forwarded to us, because we specifically asked that question. And again, I'm not sure who actually wrote the memo, which is why I didn't really feel comfortable answering it, but, I read it today, and basically, it gave the option of maybe expanding into Blackstone Valley, or potential use of some other college, maybe utilizing that, but, again...
But, but it was clear to me, when, when we looked at that in your office on Friday, that a prong of the feasibility study for the building committee was to provide a reuse analysis for Middle East.
Yes.
That's, that's what it says. That's, that's what we were told last May. So, so I guess, you know, my question is, you know, we're talking about identified projects, and, and we know we can go forward, and, you know, we can pay for Woodland, and we can, you know, pay for the fields, and we can pay for the youth center, but, you know, right now, you know, the Middle School East is what comes to the top of my head as to an identified project, that, you know, I don't know what the plan is for that.
I guess, I guess my question would be, Brian, what if we decide that, that we don't want to use it for municipal purposes, and it isn't identified, it doesn't turn into identified project, but instead turns into identified new revenue?
I, I, I think the point is, Bill, that, you know, at some point, through this ten-year process that we've heard about, should have been an analysis, I think, to give us an idea as to what we do with that building. You know, to me, I mean, that, that, to me, I think is, is the piece that's, that's not complete. And I know, you know, one of the things that I urged the school department to, over the last ten years, was to do a matchup analysis of this proposed plan with the new Woodland, as opposed to, you know, renovating Middle East, and continuing with the renovations of Middle East and Woodland. And I don't know that that analysis was ever done, and, you know, there's, there's nothing on the table right now for Middle School East. I guess the plan is just, it's gonna get dumped in this board's lap to try to make some determination with it, and I guess, if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do. So, now the question is, are we gonna have enough financial flexibility in the plan going forward to be able to adapt the school for municipal use?
And maybe it's conflicting, maybe it's conflicting guidance that you've given them in previous years, as Sharon, guidance in my discussions, and talking with members of, well, certainly, the superintendent, other members of the school committee and building committee, is to follow the statute and identify it as surplus, and let the, let the committee that this board establishes decide what the appropriate use of that is. Because, again, maybe it's revenue, maybe it's not a project, maybe there's no cost, and it's very difficult to start projecting on all its potential uses, and have only the building committee looking at that, or only the school department looking at that, when in fact, it should be a much broader community effort to decide what we're gonna do. So, what I've said is, follow the statute, remain consistent with the law, and identify it as surplus, and it's up to the, the board of selectmen to then set that process going forward, decide what we're gonna do.
Well, I mean, okay, so, that's the plan. I, you know, I don't know if I would characterize that as a conservative-type plan in terms of that building. To me, I, you know, I think it's just, you know, passing a buck, and...
Well, that's what the statute provides, Brian, I don't, I'm not rewriting law here.
The statute is not applicable, you're talking about surplus property. What I'm talking about is a proactive approach to come up with an alternative use, or some prospective use for this particular building going forward. Now, the sense I got is that it has not been done, even though, and maybe I misunderstood the memorandums from the state, but, it's my understanding that part of that feasibility study was to go towards some potential reuse of Middle School East. So, that's, that's the question, Mark, I have. So, now, we're at where we're at, it clearly has not been done, the town is going to have to embark on something with that building. Question is, are we comfortable with the degree of financial flexibility? Because it's going to cost money to do something with that building.
Maybe. Maybe it brings in revenue, I don't know.
Well...
Right? I mean, my point is, if we put it back on the tax roll and sell it, there's no cost to that.
Everything here has been done to point out a conservative, worst-case scenario against this. So, I, I don't feel comfortable just tossing that out there and say, maybe we're gonna make some money off it. I mean, I don't see hope they'll make any money off the Draper building. So, I mean, I would like to, I would like to have a plan going forward.
Brian, you saw across the street from adaptive reuse for Draper facilities and their headquarters there, and their administrative wing, where that's now a long-term assisted living facility. You saw the school that became a condo right next door to that building. So, there are lots of uses that are potential where it could actually bring in revenue rather than cost of town. I'm not prepared to say at this point that it's gonna cost the town anything, because that committee has not been formed through the nine years that I've been here, from this, this board, and that's exactly how the statute reads, it's our responsibility.
And if that's the degree of care that you're comfortable with, so be it, that's fine.
Okay.
I, I'm not.
Okay. I'm just citing the examples that...
I, I would like to, you know, continue with this, I think, conservative, you know, planned approach and view of this situation, and to me, you know, that would have had some sort of idea for the town as to what we're gonna do with that building. Now, it hasn't been done, so, the only point I'm trying to make, are we comfortable with the financial flexibility that we have to be able to deal with that particular scenario?
Yes. Again, without knowing any of the facts upfront, it's tough to make a decision, as well as we're also projecting ten years in advance now, so...
I know that, I know.
But, yes, as far as bonding capabilities, there's lots of room, even if thirty-four million dollars comes onto our balance sheet as a liability. Again, we were very conservative, without knowing the numbers, I still comfortably say, yes, there is flexibility, and I am comfortable.
And is that same flexibility gonna be there when the EPA comes down with the stormwater guidelines?
I believe so, yeah. We incorporated this, I'm talking with Bonnie Reese downstairs, the town engineer, we got the numbers that we feel will actually realistically happen, and, as well as not trying to count too much on these numerous agencies that probably will kick some money into this situation, we feel we incorporated it all into our plan, and, again, I'm, I'm comfortable with where we stand and what's presented.
Okay, okay. Well, I mean, that's, that's, you know, your, your recommendation, your, your analysis, and, and, and look, I'm not, you know, trying to, you know, dump it on your shoulders, Zach.
Yeah.
I mean, I think you did a great job in, you know, spearheading this analysis of affordability on, on this particular school project, and other identified needs that we, that we have. And, you know, my only point is, that, you know, it does bring us down...
It does.
A certain degree of inflexibility financially going forward. And we have been able to identify projects that we, that we know are there, but, you know, there's, there's always unidentified projects...
Agreed.
And there's, and there's unplanned projects.
Agreed.
So, if there's, you know, financial flexibility in here, then the town will have the ability to go forward and deal with these things on a, on a reasonable basis.
Agreed, yeah.
And, and you feel comfortable that that's...
I do, and remember, built right into these projections is one point four million dollars that we have, that we are not taxing. So, again, worse comes to worse.
I know, and, and that's a good point, because, you know, one of the major selling points of this project is that, you know, taxes are not gonna increase. And, and I agree to the extent that, you know, no one's looking at a debt exclusion or an override, but, that one point four million, in reality, if that does get reduced, that's gonna increase taxes.
Yeah. I mean, taxes are always gonna increase.
Mostly to commercial, mostly to commercial, but, you know, that, that one point four, and, and the point four, you know, I mean, that really happened by mistake, I think, this past year, I think it was always designed to be about a million dollars.
It was.
But, I think, what I'm trying to get out there, and I'm sorry if people are getting upset at me, and I know the building committee has worked very hard on this project, and I appreciate that, these projects are not easy to do. I know the school committee is, is focused on this, you know, there's no question that something needs to be done at Woodland School. It's, it's something that's been planned for, for a number of years, but, I think that people just have to have a full understanding and a full awareness of what they're signing on to if they vote for this project. To me, yes, it's financially doable, there's, there's no question about it. I think the analysis that you did basically says it's financially doable, and things can pretty much go on the way they are going forward, absent something unanticipated. And, that makes me a little nervous in terms of the unanticipated, but I also, you know, don't feel that we've fully provided for some of the things that we do anticipate. But, from what you're telling me, there should be enough financial flexibility within this plan that the town can deal with that.
That's correct.
Paul?
Yes, just one point to keep in mind, all these projections do not include free cash, and over the last, you could go, you could talk in averages, the last ten years, and I don't have it in front of me, but we've averaged at least one and a half to two million dollars of free cash, which we have used for all these other things. So, in our analysis, we did not throw the free cash in there, because there are other things that may cost other money, funds available. We have budgeted a million in capital, just to make that point, that can be used if it has to be to fix a roof on a leaky building we're trying to sell, whatever it is. But, there is, there is plenty of flexibility in this financing schedule that we put together, that we, we're not incorporating the things that we don't know either, but year by year, we would take a look at and see, do we need to draw this much out of stabilization or not? In the last few years, we've had plenty of excess levy capacity... In the last few years, we've had plenty of excess levy capacity. And even looking forward, we probably don't even have to draw down probably the tune of half of what we're projecting based on where we currently are of the town's levy, without making any other changes.
Right.
From the analysis that we put in for the things that we can see and the unseen, there's a certain amount of coverage there.
Because at any given point, Paul, the decision might be made not to transfer funds from the stabilization to pay off the debt service, but instead apply a portion of free cash.
Exactly.
Or the capital budget of, say, a million dollars per year. That might not be needed any particular year. You might only need $500,000. So you take that other $500,000, you could pay towards your debt service and not draw down the stabilization. I understand that. I get that, and I think the analysis is a sound one. And, you know, I think there's enough financial flexibility there, I hope, to deal with these other unanticipated situations that may arise. You know, the debt payment really is similar to someone paying their mortgage. And, you know, we've arbitrarily set the number, like Mark said, at $3 million a year out of the operating budget, booting it up to 3.5 million. But that's not going to cover what the mortgage payment is. So it has to come from other sources, whether it comes from free cash or some appropriated capital money that's not going to get used for capital or the stabilization. It's there. So I understand the analysis. And, you know, like I said, I think all of you, you know, the finance committee, the financial team, everybody, you know, pulled together a large amount of information, really distilled it down in a short period of time, you know, to give us the analysis going forward, you know, so that we have a good sense as to what the numbers are.
Yeah, I don't want it to be lost on anybody in the room either, that we're placing the greatest burden on the school when in fact that's not the greatest drain on the stabilization fund. It's other capital projects that will draw it down much further. When we look at the, it's being drawn down to $9 million, right? If we just fund the schools, the other projects are the ones that take it to a 1.6. So it's a great deal of burden, but it's a big project. It should receive this type of scrutiny. And I appreciate anybody asking questions so that we can get the answers and that the team works harder. That's what makes us better in the process. But now, is there, we have articles in front of us. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, the first article is a, on the zoning article. I would make the move that we give a favorable recommendation on the zoning article number one.
Is there a second?
This is the special town meeting?
Yes.
Well, why don't we have a little bit of explanation from town council on this article?
You got the floor, Jeff.
This one started out, I think, as many people know, if they watched the planning board the other night or heard other discussions, the orig, not the original, but a past iteration of the building committee's plans had a building that was going to intrude into what the bylaw sets back as a 100-foot buffer zone for...
Excuse me.
And it was going to, at one point, visioned as possibly having a height with a peaked roof of 70 feet. So they went and got a variance from the zoning board of appeals, which were granted. A lot of, but it's had a lot of input at that time. And the committee saw those concerns and went back to the drawing board and with some effort adjusted the building location, number one, to eliminate any need for relief as far as the setback is concerned. So what they finally went to the planning board with was only relief as to the height, but even there indicating that it was no longer going to be possibly 70 feet. At a max, at two points, it was 47 feet. The bulk of the building was 42 feet and other portions were below the 35 foot. That's already within the zoning bylaw for residential structures. So what will come before, the motion before town meeting will not relate to the setbacks at all. It'll only relate to the height.
Height, alright.
And that's, again, it's the way it's structured. It'll relate to any public schools, the way it's structured right now would not be subject to the height limit, but would remain subject to the setback limitations.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there, look for a second?
Yeah, just had a question. Was there any thought, Jerry, to make this bylaw change applicable to public buildings as opposed to just schools?
No, that's the way it was proposed, was for public schools. By putting it into a footnote that exempts other items like public monuments and there's a couple of other things listed that are exempt from the height limits right now. No, there wasn't any thought given by the building committee to doing anything other than relating to schools.
So this is just to relate to schools?
Public schools, only public schools.
Public schools.
Not private schools, right?
So if we were to build a fire station or something in a neighborhood that was going to be a particular height, this wouldn't apply?
Arguably still subject to height limits, yes.
Okay.
And once again, Mr. Chairman, as town council has said, the building committee worked very, very hard to try to address the concerns of the neighbors, and they did the best they could to come up with this. But they deliberated very deeply to try to compromise and do it and to make it less obtrusive, and I think they've done it. So this is the article.
Do you feel comfortable with the second?
I'll second it, yes.
Okay, I'll vote in favor of that unanimous. Is there another motion?
And the second motion, Mr. Chairman, is the article two, which would be for the town to appropriate, borrow, transfer from Baylord Sons some of money to be expended under the direction of the school building committee for the construction of a new Woodland Elementary School and ancillary facilities. And this will be at Ten Heart Vine Street.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Here.
I'm not going to second it.
Okay, I'll second it. That's two in favor. Are you opposed?
I'll abstain.
Abstain. We have an abstention. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is to set the annual date for the town meeting. Rick, would you like to introduce that?
We have two other articles for the town meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to?
We do have two other articles, yes. Article three is just a vote to amend under Article 17 of the October 22, 2012, special town meeting relating to the window project. As you remember, the original appropriation was to new install, new windows to be installed. The actual is going to be renovation and/or refurbishing of existing windows.
Okay.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor of that unanimous. That's more of a housekeeping one. What else?
Exactly. The final one is an article asking the town to authorize the board of selectmen to execute a boundary line agreement between the town of Milford and Canyons LLC and Hooton LLC. This is dealing with the boundary line at 9-25 Main Street and 33 Sumner Street. They share a common boundary. Over the years, the boundary was relocated when the pawn was relocated. This would now have a clear, defined boundary as it was not clearly defined before. The lot line can be established by a boundary line agreement between the respective property owners because the town is one of the abutting property owners. In this instance, such an agreement will require the vote of town meeting.
So that presentation is not, has not come to us yet?
Attorney Petnari was here at the last meeting on behalf of his client and did review that with the board of selectmen, correct?
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
All right. I'll also vote in favor of that unanimous. Okay, now we've got the setting of the annual town meeting?
Yes, I am.
The last item that we have on the agenda, I think.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am recommending an annual town meeting date of May 19. Town accountant, town treasurer, town council, finance committee, and town clerk have been so advised and agree. If you concur, I'd ask for you to vote to approve. The warrant would open this evening and close on March 13.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor of that unanimous. Not having any other businesses, this meeting primarily being called off agenda or off the typical schedule for this purpose of the Woodland building. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor of that unanimous. Thank you, everyone.